Hi guys, it's my turn to begin, let's just get open and closed. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law, nineteen seventy five entitled Open Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this open public meeting was provided and noticed on January fifth, twenty twenty one. Said notice was posted at headquarters of Board of Education offices, mail to another township clerk, sent to Templeton, Nutley, advertised in the Nutley Sun on March eighteenth at Postman Art District website. Ever flexible, please, for to agents, to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with breathing, justice for all. Go forward with the division.
Mr. Balsamo.
Mr. Balsamo.
Here, Mr. Cornesal. Mrs. Dancheck Warren.
I don't think your mic is off, Dave.
Mr. DeMaile.
Here.
Mr. Farah.
Here.
Mrs. Squirt.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Arrow.
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Here.
Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJ SA ten four twelve, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recessed opposed executive session at this time to discuss personnel and negotiations. It further resolved that the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of sensitive meeting on the Board of Education or when the research were discussing such matters of close session no longer exist. The motion?
Motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because disabilities were not yet well understood or accepted properly, she and her family and her friends had to battle every day. She would always tell her mother to tell people, "I graduated with high honors." She felt that because people thought she had a handicap that she was intellectually challenged. People would talk slowly, loud, or baby talk to her, and she despised them. Staring was another thing that often happened to her, and she would feel so conscious at first, but later accepted that as well. Sal has shared quotes with me written about Melissa from a variety of perspectives, and I not only admire her advocacy, but her willingness to work, to teach others, and to help others so no other family had to suffer in the way that hers did. Many in her position would have given up, but not Melissa. In nineteen ninety, Melissa helped her mother establish the New Jersey Chapter for dystonia to help find a cure and better treatments for this disease. Melissa raised money, collected items, and through her actions became an inspiration to so many men. Melissa also underwent many painful medical procedures to assess and attempt to treat dystonia. She believed she was put on this earth for a reason and that God had a plan for them. That reason was to be a part of the mission to find a cure for dystonia, and with Melissa's passing, she has also left her mission to find an answer for dystonia to her family and friends. Because of their hard work and determination, Melissa will never be forgotten. Her memory will live on and all of those she touched and continues to touch throughout this endeavor. In Melissa's short time here on earth, she displayed an uncommon grace and dignity which we should all should have. Sal, I want to thank you for sharing your friend with us and for continuing to work with her family and friends to leave this legacy. I'd like to introduce you now to Melissa.
Melissa was born on February twenty first, nineteen seventy seven, and she seemed absolutely perfect. She was a wonderful child with so much love for everyone. At about six years old, we noticed she held her arm up, bent at the elbow, every once in a while. We asked her pediatrician about it, and she told us it was a habit. She told us not to worry, Melissa would grow out of it. From that day, I feared she might have a brain tumor. CAT scan, brain tumor, biopsy, stroke, it felt like the end of the world to us. But through all this, she always smiled and worried about everyone else. It was after a spinal tap, a movement disorder doctor told us she had dystonia.
Dystonia is a disorder that involves the way you move. Dystonia makes it so that movements occur that you don't want to occur.
They didn't know much about it, they didn't know what we should expect, but the doctor did tell us that the disease would progress. Melissa was in a dance recital in June of that year and in a wheelchair by December. Melissa accepted her disability with courage, dignity, and love. Melissa's legacy is the Melissa Ann Centrella Foundation, which gives scholarships to students going into nursing or medical sciences because we knew how the shortage of nurses affected our family so dramatically.
During my last two years of high school, I helped spread awareness of the disease dystonia, and as I entered my senior year in high school, Claire had informed me of the Melissa Ann Centrella Scholarship.
Melissa thought her mother could do anything, but I knew I could not save her. She has also left me with a mission to find an answer so that no other family has to live through what we did. Melissa truly was an angel.
I am honored that I was awarded this scholarship because it has made such an amazing difference in my life. Please continue your support with the younger adults now so that in the future they can continue making a difference.
How generous would you be if Melissa was your daughter?
I believe that Melissa's mother Claire is with us tonight on the call. From all of us and from our grateful students, thank you for sharing your daughter with us and for leaving us with such a beautiful legacy and tribute.
Yes, words can certainly not say enough, but I know Mr. Balsamo has been a friend of the family since Melissa was in school, so maybe Sal would like to say something.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Dr. Blazer, I want to thank Dr. Blazer for her wonderful words. Your introduction of the video was spot on and perfect. I want to thank everybody here at the board for the work that they put in to make this happen. Claire, myself, and the rest of the foundation worked hard over the last seventeen or eighteen years to get to this point. As you saw in the video, the young woman who many years ago received this award, we are now at a point where, from now on, for as long as we can see, Melissa will be honored. Her memory will be honored with this award. And again, it's for students entering into a career in the medical sciences. Melissa was an angel, as you heard, and she showed cherished care and dignity that good healthcare professionals provided her. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Balsamo, and our prayers are with Melissa and with the entire family. Are we going to go into the presentations for the teachers? Mrs. Greco? Oh, okay. Ian?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight we recognize the fourteen staff members, two per building, who have been honored with this year's Governor's Educator of the Year Award as either a teacher or Support Staff Member of the Year. The Governor's Educator of the Year Program highlights educational innovation, student achievement, and the rewards of teaching and important services outside the classroom environment that lead to student success. It seeks to attract public attention to the positive aspects of our educational system. Tonight, we are happy to recognize these staff members here at Nutley. From Nutley High School, Teacher of the Year, Mr. Tom Stulp. According to Principal Dennis Williams, Mr. Stulp is the kind of math teacher all non-adult math learners wished they had when they were going through high school. On his schedule, you'll see that he teaches all levels of algebra, but ask his students and they'll tell you that he teaches them how to think and how to care. Mr. Stulp's classroom environment creates the conditions that welcome all students to embrace the task of growing as a math learner. Nutley High School recognizes Mrs. Rose Choffey as Support Staff Member of the Year. According to Principal Williams, Nurse Choffey has earned her recognition through her yeoman's effort this past year during COVID- nineteen. Since March thirteenth, twenty twenty, she has been the consummate professional in coordinating our efforts to stay healthy here at NHS. Keeping all stakeholders informed is no easy task, and Mrs. Choffey's attention to details help all of us on a daily basis. She has done this on top of performing her daily responsibilities of keeping student health and wellness at the forefront. We all benefit from her planning, communication, and caring. If the world only followed Rose's mantra, "Wash your hands," we wouldn't be dealing with COVID in the first place, says Mr. Williams. Congratulations to Nutley High School recipients. John H. Walker Middle School recognizes Mrs. Gabriella Beltoff as Teacher of the Year. According to Principal Egan, Ms. Beltoff is an outstanding teacher who has a positive impact on the students of John Walker Middle School, both inside and outside of the classroom. As a seventh-grade language arts teacher, Ms. Beltoff has shown remarkable dedication to her students, always helping them to do their best and reach their full potential. Her positive attitude and patient demeanor are complemented by her strong work ethic and extensive knowledge of educational best practices. As a group leader, she has worked to ensure that programs and procedures are in place to benefit all students of the middle school. Whether dedicating her evenings to supporting students in the flex program or having fun with them after school in the ping pong club, she is always there for the kids. John Walker Middle School recognizes Abigail Burden as Support Staff Member of the Year. According to Miss Egan, as the school LDTC and member of the Child Study Team, Ms. Bergen constantly works to support the students of Nutley. As an educator, her sole focus has been the students, and her decisions are always based on what's best for kids. She serves as a mentor to her colleagues, and her leadership within her department and the school community have been invaluable. She proactively communicates with all stakeholders, understanding that student success can be achieved through community support. Her quick wit and sense of humor have put smiles on the faces of all she comes in contact with. Congratulations to John H. Walker Middle School's recipients. From Lincoln School, we recognize Ms. Nicole Schrody as Teacher of the Year. According to Principal Lorraine Rustell, Nicole Schrody is a true inspiration to everyone at Lincoln School. She's always willing to lend a helping hand, no matter what the condition is. Most recently, she showed us that true faith, determination, and a growth mindset can prove true to conquer the impossible. As Nicole battled cancer, she then returned to work ready to give it her all, and she handled the new precautions of COVID- nineteen with ease. From continuing to work with her grade-level partners to planning and sharing resources to personally delivering supplies to her students at home, she never missed a beat. Her dedication to the students and their families is something that is recognized and admired by all at Lincoln School. Support Staff Member of the Year from Lincoln School goes to Rosa Alba Caputo. According to Mrs. Rustell, Rosa goes above and beyond all pathways throughout the day. One moment she can be seen cleaning out the fish tank in a classroom, and the next moment, teaching small group instruction. She has been seen running with the students on the field during the lunch hour and then closing the day by helping students organize their desk. She is known at Lincoln School as Mama Italiano, and she lends a hand to children and adults with a never-ending smile. She has a laugh that is contagious. Rosa spreads positive energy throughout the building and continues to look on the bright side of any situation she encounters. She sincerely cares for each and every person she comes in contact with. Congratulations to Lincoln's recipients. Radcliffe School recognizes Mrs. Gina Herbert as Teacher of the Year. According to Principal Mr. Mike Carney, Mrs. Herbert is an exceptional teacher. In her past position, she has made contact with all the students of Radcliffe School from kindergarten through sixth grade, teaching almost every grade level. Because of the success she's had in the classroom, she has chosen to work with students who benefit from her unique skill set. Currently, Mrs. Herbert teaches strategy skills and level literacy intervention, as well as general education in first grade. She is also our intervention and referral services team participant. She has the unique ability to meet children where they are academically and help them move forward. From Radcliffe School, we recognize Support Staff Member of the Year Jenny Madalena. Mrs. Madalena is an exceptional teacher consultant with the Child Study Team, says Mr. Carney. She first began her time at Nutley as a special education at the middle school and continues to carry her classroom experience into her decision-making process. Since she began at Radcliffe School, she has been a force on the team, taking on the responsibilities that come with leading an outstanding special services program. She is respected by staff, students, and the families that she serves. Congratulations to Radcliffe's recipients. This year, Spring Garden School recognizes Mrs. Roseanne Rizzuto as Teacher of the Year. According to Principal Lori LaGuardia, Mrs. Rizzuto embodies the essence of what it takes to be an exceptional educator during these challenging times. She has embraced remote instruction while putting the needs of the whole child at the forefront through her nurturing style. Her kindness, flexibility, and empathy make her the quintessential educator. The saying, "The best teachers educate with their hearts, not just their minds," truly captured how Mrs. Rizzuto connects with her students, her families, and colleagues. Spring Garden School recognizes Mrs. Cindy Moscolo as Support Staff Member of the Year. Mrs. LaGuardia shares this about their school nurse. Mrs. Moscolo has been diligent, steadfast, and proactive in handling the many safety and health guidelines facing educators today. She puts the health and wellness of our community at the forefront of her decisions and ensures that she meets our needs as a school community. These times are very challenging, and she has risen to the occasion. The following quote regarding nurses applies to Mrs. Moscolo. Nurse is just another word to describe a person strong enough to tolerate anything, yet soft enough to understand anyone. Congratulations to Spring Garden's recipients. This year, Yanacaw School recognizes Mrs. Marie Pead as Teacher of the Year. According to Principal Frank Francia, Mrs. Pead is kind and compassionate as a kindergarten teacher who has been part of the Yanacaw Elementary School for the past ten years. She has proven to be a tremendous asset to our school and to our district. It's clear when you walk into her classroom or attend it virtually that she truly cares about her students. She has a warm and inviting approach and advocates for all of her learners. Her love for teaching is apparent through her well-planned, fun, and engaging lessons. She is innovative, creative, and consistently strives to meet the diverse needs of her students. She connects with young learners, elevating their love of learning through her dynamic instruction. She's always willing to collaborate and assist her colleagues, and she is respected by all in the school and in the community. She positively impacts the lives of the students and always encourages them to strive to do their best. Congratulations. This year, Yanacaw School also recognizes Mrs. Jessica Tubertini as Support Staff Member of the Year. According to Mr. Francia, Ms. Tubertini has been the Yanacaw School Child Study Team member for the past five years. She manages all of our special education students' individual education plans. She's a strong advocate for all of her students. She ensures that teachers fully understand each student's IEP and is always willing to review modifications with the staff. During the virtual and hybrid setting, Ms. Tubertini has worked tirelessly to ensure our special education population has all of the necessary resources and support to be successful. She is always willing to assist in any manner and truly supports Yanacaw School. She's a team player with a strong work ethic, and she has been a valuable asset to the Yanacaw community and to the district. Congratulations to Yanacaw's recipients. And lastly, Washington School. This year, Washington School recognizes Mrs. Courtney Hayes as Teacher of the Year. According to Principal Doug Jones, Mrs. Hayes is an amazing fourth-grade teacher. She loves working with students and is constantly seen challenging them to attain higher levels of understanding in all content areas. Her children love and respect her, and she in turn inspires and excites them to become lifelong learners. Mrs. Hayes is a valued member of the Washington School faculty and a master teacher. Her methodology and pedagogy are of the highest caliber in the profession. This year, Washington School recognizes Mrs. Carmela Ponteriero as Support Staff Member of the Year. Mr. Jones questions, "Have you ever thought about how hard school might be for learners who need extra support?" Carmela knows the answer to this question well. She is a caring power professional at Washington School and has worked tirelessly with children during her tenure there. She strives to help children find success in learning and in school. She is caring and knowledgeable in supporting her students and helps them unlock their true potential. Carmela is the consummate professional and a valued colleague of the Washington School community.
On behalf of the Board of Education and the administrators of the Nutley Public School District, we congratulate all of the recipients this year, and we thank you for your hard work and dedication to our students, especially during a most challenging year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now have a presentation for our Board Attorney on school ethics. Presentation, if that's what you want to call it, or at least a classroom, a classroom visit.
Yeah, Ian can pull that up. Ian can pull up the presentation. This Board, while he's doing that, this Board made a commitment a while back, when I got here, to do an ongoing ethics training. We did some over the summer, and part of the, you know, what we have is the presentation here is a working document. We covered portions of this already during the summer, and instead of doing it at a board retreat or something like that and spending two hours or more in doing it, the Board made a commitment to ongoing ethics training. Under the law, you have to just certify that you did ethics training once a year. But instead of like cramming it all into one, I think doing little pieces, having Q and A's as we go along through the year, and the feedback I got from the board is to be doing it that way. So we have the presentation here that I'm going to start going through. I'm going to skip over a lot of slides. During the summer, we focused on the Code of Ethics, and you'll see when the screen comes up, there's like basically three components. You know, one is the Code of Ethics, one is the statute that deals with prohibited acts, and then you're going to do your annual requirements on things. So Ian, if you could skip to the next one. Make that a full screen.
Not fully on that now.
Without the slides on the side. All right, and just as I said, this is just those three areas of the law, all right? We focused already on the Code of Ethics for school board members, you see it number two there. So tonight, we're going to hit a little bit of the prohibited acts, and then go into some of the advisory opinions and case law opinions that come out of this, so go ahead, Ian. All right, real quickly, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this either. The only two things I just wanted, these are like the definitions of the statute. The only couple of things I just want to point out is the business interest part. It's ten percent or more of a business interest. So whenever they're talking about, you can't vote on something in which you have a business interest in. It's ten percent or more on that. Immediate family members, spouse, dependent child, people in the same household. So whenever you hear that, that's the same household. Relative, all right, is a spouse, adopted child, parent, or sibling. All right, and you guys as school board members are school officials. So whatever you see in here, school officials under prohibited acts, that covers you too. So go ahead, skip to the next one. All right. No school official or member of the immediate family should have an interesting business, just like we've talked about, an organization which is in substantial conflict with the proper discharge of his duties in the public interest. That's where that comes in, so you can't have substantial interest in something that's going to be in a conflict. And that's a case-by-case basis, as we'll see later on, go ahead, Ian. You can't, a school board member can't use their official position to secure unwarranted privileges, advantage, or employment for themselves or members of the immediate family. Go ahead. Try to go through these as quickly as possible. You can't use your official capacity when a member of the immediate family or business organization has an interest that's in direct financial involvement or conflict with the board or create some benefit to the school official or a member of the immediate family. Go ahead, Ian. You can't undertake any employment or service whether compensated or not. I've had situations where board members were not compensated, whether compensated or not, which might reasonably be expected to prejudice your independence of judgment in the act of being a board member. So it doesn't, the thing here is, it doesn't necessarily have to be paid, but if it could reasonably be seen by the public as a conflict with your duties, so go ahead. All right, yeah, I'm not going to read all this stuff word for word for you, but you can't, a business organization which you have an interest, you can't solicit or accept gifts or favors or loans or political contributions. Now, there's an exception to that, all right? Campaign contributions, all right? Don't apply to contributions to the campaign of an announced candidate for elected public office. If the school official has no knowledge or reason to believe that those campaign contributions, if accepted, were given with that intent of a quid pro quo or, you know, intent of getting something back. So you can make political contributions, not prohibited, just as long as there's not some underlying, you know, influence of your official duties. Go ahead. You can't, you can't use or allowed to be used your public office or employment or any information not generally available to the rest of the public. So you can't take confidential information that's not available to the public and use that, have like insider trading, and use that for your own political advantage, your own advantage. Go ahead, Ian. You can't represent a person, all right? Or any other party that's in conflict with the school board. So basically, you can't be undertaking adverse things. There's going to be an exception to this, I'm going to show you a little bit later. Go ahead, Ian. No school official should be deemed in conflict with these provisions if, by reason of your participation in any matter required to be voted on, no material or monetary gain accrues to you or a member of your family or group that could reasonably be expected to accrue to other members, all right, in that group. So you, what this basically means is, you're not going to get any benefit that's any different to anybody else. So if by being in this group or organization, you're not achieving any other benefit that's special to others, then it's not a prohibited act. Go ahead. You can't be prohibited, no member shall, no elected member shall be prohibited from making an inquiry for information on behalf of a constituent if no fee, reward, or anything of value is promised to or given or accepted. All right, so, I mean, obviously, this says, as long as you're not taking a fee for something, you can make inquiries on behalf of constituents, that's normal. Go ahead, go ahead. Nothing prohibits a school official, a board member of your immediate family from representing yourselves or themselves in negotiations or proceedings concerning your own interests. There's a case that we're going to see, just to touch on a little bit later, where a board member with a child with five oh four went and advocated for their child's interests against the board, so to speak, against. But nothing in the Code of Ethics prohibits you from being a parent and advocating, especially in a situation like a five oh four or special education. Nothing prohibits you from advocating on behalf of your child or, you know, in that respect. Go ahead, Ian. Employ, I skipped that one, that's all right, that's not really good. And this is, oh, now onto the Code of Ethics, which we're going to skip over. We did this in the summertime, okay? We're doing prohibited acts, we did the Code of Ethics, again, keep skipping over those. I'll tell you when to stop, keep going, keep going, keep going. And we'll revisit those from time to time, but there's, all right, requirements. This is what I talked about before. The requirements are annually discussed, the Code of Ethics. Adopt policies in order to enforce the Code of Ethics, and by documentation that each board member has reviewed the Code of Ethics. This is annually, especially when you get new board members in, have to do that. All right, Ian, go ahead. Keep going. Skip over those, we'll break to the cases. All right, these are the ethics decisions and advisory opinions. I'm not going to belabor a lot of them, I touched on some of them already. I'll try to just hit some of the highlights. This was a board member who posted on social media blogs, and listen, this is something that board members get jammed up a lot in, in many of the districts that I'm in with social media. And you don't lose your First Amendment rights on self-expression, whether it's in social media or in the newspapers or whatever, any type of media. This rule kind of applies to all those situations where it's in social media, blogs, or newspapers in terms of, if you're going to be putting stuff out there, you have to make sure you have a disclaimer that you are not speaking on behalf of the board. And nothing that you're going to put in that blog, because there's somebody else who gets jammed up here who, even though they put the disclaimer in, they still were saying, well, as a board member, as a board member, you know, during the rest of what they were putting out there. Just like you can't speak on behalf of the board, all right? Any comments? Any, any comments that go to the public have to come from the president. Unless the president delegates somebody else to speak on behalf of the board. So whenever you're speaking in public, whether it's blogs, publicly to people, newspaper, whatever, you have, if you're not speaking for the board, you have to say, I'm speaking as a private citizen, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. Uh, in, in this case, she posted things about a teacher's qualifications, salary, implying she was hired to a patronage. The blog included a disclaimer that she, she was speaking personally. This is one of those change things. She said, oh, I'm not speaking personally. Well, guess what? The blog posts are considered personal action that will compromise the board and harm the teacher's reputation within the district in violation of the Ethics Act, even though they put the disclaimer in. Go ahead, Ian, skip to the next one. Am I doing on time, Charlie? Um... Okay, they, this is rights to freedom of speech, which I just, uh, touched on. You can skip that one. All right. It was a violation for board members to discuss, and this is when there was ethics charges going on between board members. And it ended up being a violation, uh, of the ethics because they voted on, uh, the settlement agreement of the ethics charges against each other. So obviously, there was a conflict there. Go ahead, Ian. All right, this one is interesting because it, it's a distinction with another one, where it was a violation for board members to go directly to some employees to talk about union contract things without informing the superintendent, uh, without the superintendent being in, involved. That was a violation. This one here, they said it was not a violation, uh, for them to have engaged in closed-door discussions with the representative of the custodial services division. The union contract was not discussed, and the matter had already been investigated by the superintendent with no finding of a violation. So that's a distinction because it was another, there's another opinion that said it was wrong because they did talk about contract negotiation. They did talk about things to do with, you know, labor relations, and did not involve the superintendent. Go ahead. All right, this, this one, it, it wasn't a violation because this board member voted to accept a food services con- food services report. She was, uh, had a conflict with the food services vendor, but she wasn't voting on approval of the contract, which would have definitely been a violation. She was just voting on approving the report. Go ahead. Go ahead. Let's find some more interesting ones. Nah, skip that one. All right, this one, uh, i- i- here, this was kind of questionable, I, I mean, with my opinion. There was no violation when a board member allegedly made a statement about a student during an open meeting. The complaint was dismissed, uh, but the, the, the SEC, the School Ethics Commission, really stressed in accordance of treating, you know, all that come before the board with DCC respect of not doing that. So they didn't find the violation, but, you know, it, obviously, it's something that we don't want to be involved in. Go ahead, Ian.
Are we getting close to the end, Mr. DePisa?
I'll do one more now. Yep, that, that's my cue. I, like I said, I'll do whatever you got. I can go for 10 minutes. Yeah, but you know what? Um, I can wrap it up because then, we, as, you know, you guys said, we're going to do this in little pieces, you know, ongoing and...
Scott has been very helpful in guiding all of us as far as our responsibility as board members. And, uh, we wanted the public to know what is entailed in this job. And I certainly appreciate your presentation tonight, even though it, because of what we're trying to do. And the audience needs to understand that this board is, is focused on getting back to normal with our children's education, getting back to normal with our Board of Education process. So we're working our way through, just like everyone else in, in, in the world is doing. So, um, we'll get there. I appreciate it tonight, and we're going to move on. Mr. DePisa. And I think, for what it's worth, I'm not sure those microphones are, are clear enough to the public. You might do better with one of our microphones, but I, I'm not even sure about that. Well, yeah, everybody keeps...
Dr. Dr. Glazer has the first four or five slides. I have the last slide, Charlie.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Hopefully, you can hear me. I'm, I'm talking directly into the microphone, so, um, I'm hoping that, um, it is broadcasting. Tonight, in addition to the other presentations we've had, um, we do have the preliminary budget on the agenda, um, for board approval. And in my role, I'm here to, to just reiterate the, oops, go back, yep, to the budget process. Um, the budget, um, for the Board of Education, you just, I think, heard some of the ethics comments. Um, the budget is the actual financial expression of the district's goals. We take the strategic plan, we take the district goals, we take the Board of Education goals, and we use those to build a budget that is a vision for what we expect education to be in the Nutley Public Schools. Um, and the way that's translated is, um, to the community. What this board values, right? What they value of an education, the goals that they set last year, the budget goals that we set, that, that should be reflected in the final budget that's presented, um, to the community. Next slide. The process is pretty straightforward. There is a budget flow process to develop of our budget. We, um, continue to do a zero-based budget where, um, we work through the whole chain of command to develop it. David DePisa, who you'll hear from in a minute, um, our business administrator, works with our teachers, principals, supervisors, with me endlessly, with the board endlessly, with the ad hoc budget committee of the board after tonight, to be able to set the parameters, um, for the budget, to have an understanding of the budget that he's building. Then, after tonight, um, you have what's called the tentative approval. The board, um, looks at the budget, they ensure that it's a budget that supports student achievement. It's a budget that supports the standards-based instruction that we expect, the high-quality education that we expect from Nutley. And that is the board's role, to look at that. Um, and again, there'll be a resolution on the agenda tonight, um, for tentative approval. But that tentative approval is just that. This is a preliminary budget. After the, um, tentative budget goes to the executive county superintendent to review, to make sure all the accounts and lines are in place, to make sure balances, revenue and expenses, of the executive county yield, um, return that budget to the district. We'll have between tonight and April 19th, when that, uh, budget is voted, the final budget is voted, to have conversations with the board, again, through their ad hoc budget committee, through their regular board committees, with the community at large, um, to look at the input, to make sure that they're making informed decisions on the budget. And finally, on April 19th, it's the board's responsibility to adopt that final budget. They need to consider the community input, they need to consider that chain of command input, they need to remember the, um, goals that we set forth for education in the township of Nutley. And then, at the, um, April 19th meeting, comes to that final budget. We are held to that, um, April 19th. After the final budget is voted, it cannot be changed. Next slide, please. So the board's role, right? As I said, the board sets the priorities. What is it that we have to fund? What are those district goals? What is the student achievement that we're trying to accomplish? What is it that the community can afford? It's a real balancing act to really make sure that the tax levy we're bringing forth is also something that, um, the community supports. Um, the board also is responsible with, uh, Mr. DePisa for developing that budget plan, to making sure that we get to this night on time through, working through our finance committee meetings, working through our board meetings to have that, um, that budget. And to be able to come tonight, you'll hear from David, to communicate to the community, to make sure that everybody understands not just the board's role, not just the responsibilities, but the goals of the budget that are being set forth. And then, of course, the board's role is to have oversight over that final budget. They need to make sure, again, that that student achievement and standards, um, are being met, but also to make sure that the money is being spent efficiently and effectively. Next slide. Thank you. So this is kind of like Scott's slide to the board. It comes from the School Boards Association. It's that knowledge check, right? Select all that apply, what's the board's role? And obviously, all of those boxes apply. Setting priorities, developing the calendar, developing a budget, communicating to the community. And then, of course, ensuring that the final budget supports, um, student achievement and standards. And that's, you know, what all of the board members are doing tonight, whether they're here, um, in person, or with us virtually. Next slide. So I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. DePisa then to go through the actual budget update for where we are with the preliminary budget, and talk to you a little bit about what is on the agenda for resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. So our budget process actually started in October. A budget calendar, um, was created that included, um, presenting to the board the budget calendar, which ends this year on, uh, April 19th with our public hearing. All of the administrators, coordinators, central office administrators, um, gathered information, presented their content area and department budgets to central office. That came into central office sometime in December. Um, I can't tell you who's put together, brought to the committee approximately two and a half weeks ago. A lot of work went into creating this preliminary budget. I can tell you that I hold in high regard the input from the finance committee, from the administrators, and from the coordinators. This budget tonight will be resolution number 21. Mr. Kazinsky has it in his possession. It's a, it's a walk-on motion. Mr. Viermeister will, will have it up on the agenda as well. It's a tax levy increase, the preliminary budget is a tax increase of 2%. It's going to the county office for technical review. The ad hoc committee of the board will now meet with myself, Dr. Glazer, Mr. Banyan, and vet out if they have any findings for corrections, or additions, or deletions from this budget. From now until the 19th of April, on the 19th of April, we will have our pub- public budget hearing and approval of a final document that will be the Nutley Board of Education's 2122 school budget. I can't tell you my first six months here, learning process, the scheduling of how you do business, what you do, what the needs are, is an ongoing situation for me. However, welcomed with open arms, again, I embraced it. We have a document here, I'm pretty confident that this document will meet all technical review from the county. Thank you, Mr. Kazinsky, and thank you very much, everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePisa. Um, and again, just to reiterate, this is a preliminary school board budget. Um, we've put together an ad hoc committee that will now be reviewing this budget. I, I'm going to say line by line, but I doubt we're going to, well, hopefully, we're going to do that, but there's some key points that we're going to look at in the budget to be sure that it meets the expectations of educating our children the way we like and being officially responsible to the taxpayers. That's one thing that we'll be working on, so I appreciate your input. Um, Mr. Hold on, would you like to say something? Okay. Yes, sir. Okay, superintendent's report, Dr. Glazer.
Hey. So we're going to try this one more time. It is, um, disappointing to, to not be able to hear us, when there are so very many positives tonight. But good evening and welcome. Not only are we here for our first in-person board meeting, um, in a full year, but we were able to recognize this year's Governor's Educator of the Year awards winner for each school. If you couldn't hear it, um, Karen Greco did a lovely job with the screencast. We'll make sure we share it and recognize those teachers again a different night. We got to accept a generous donation of scholarships for our students. It's also good news that when so much attention is pulled away from COVID-19, we can still showcase the district operations with our preliminary budget, our ethics training, and our regular agenda. And on the agenda tonight, there is a resolution to announce Social Emotional Learning Day, Friday, March 26th. Starting today, there are scheduled programs to encourage all community members to learn about and share their knowledge of the importance and impact of integrating evidence-based social emotional learning into our schools, into our organizations, into our community. Um, that is one of our strategic plan goals as well. And we're looking forward to not just the activities this week, but to our ongoing work and to the ongoing work of that committee. But there's even more to celebrate. Since January 11th, we have conducted 1,500 COVID tests of staff and students. We received 340 doses of the vaccine from our Hackensack Medical Partners, and were able to vaccinate all the staff members who wanted to schedule. We did that on Thursday, March 11th, Friday, March 12th, and Sunday, March 14th. The second doses were scheduled at the same time as the first. You didn't have any control over that schedule, but we're really proud that, um, we were able to release staff to get those doses. We have followed all Health Department and CDC guidance to date, since last March 16th. While some of you think that that's a pretty loose framework, we, like many districts in the country, the state, the county, have accepted these guidelines for their consistency, medical, and scientific direction during these unprecedented times. You can argue a different position, but with the lack of consistent direction, we've chosen this as our consistent touchstone. More than 500 districts remain hybrid. We were open, we were fortunate to open on March 1st and stay open for the past three weeks without closing. I've been asked by my colleagues how we accomplished that feat, and it's because our protocols are strong. Testing, vaccinating, daily screening, temperature taking. We've had to implement our isolation room. We've had positive staff and students. We've had to quarantine, but we followed our plan, and we've been successful. Our school improvement panels and our pandemic response teams met on Tuesday and Wednesday, March 9th and 10th, with more than 40 teachers, nurses, child study team members, and administrators attending each day. As per the letter sent to families and staff, we were able to follow through with our announcement of eliminating virtual Wednesdays at the elementary level and bringing pre, pre-K, our ABA programs, our LLD programs, and our English language learners back to the buildings five days a week, beginning today, March 22nd. I left Nutley Friday night, excited for our next phase of the reopening plan, and proud of every single member of our team, whether it was a food service person, custodian, nurse, teaching staff, support staff, administrators, or our full Board of Education, who have been planning and awaiting the change from six feet to three feet. In our advocacy to the United States Commissioner of Education, the governor, our senators, I was assured that this was on the event horizon, and we were ready. Our confidence in our practices has us opening on April 12th, the Monday after break, with the intention of five days per week, pre-K to 12th. The current start and end times remain the same, consistent for students for now. We'll be reopening the portal tomorrow and keeping it open until Friday, March 26th, until noon, for parents to choose in-person instruction or 100% virtual for the final time this school year. Please note, this is your final choice. The 100% virtual option is still a state mandate. We still have to offer that, um, and therefore, hybrid instruction will still be happening, um, throughout the end of the school year. All of the data we collect in the portal is what we're going to use to schedule, um, and to continue moving forward. And because I've probably gotten six or seven emails today, I want to make sure that I say this publicly, I think I've said it every time, um, at least since November, we do expect to be back to a full schedule sooner than later. We expect to be fully open in September, the same way we were in September 2019. I know there's some of you that don't believe me, but it is significantly less complicated to run our full schedule than the current hybrid model. And we are all looking forward... to that return. Our teachers continue to work longer and harder to ensure that each child is receiving individualized instruction, and truly, they remain the heroes in this process, doing whatever is necessary to keep instruction going. In addition, not only do we expect to return to full in-person instruction in the fall, we've been very successful in vaccinating staff, and under the new guidelines, people who are fully vaccinated, defined as two weeks after their second dose, no longer have to quarantine after exposure. So hopefully, we won't be in the same position of opening and closing classrooms. And again, we've done very well with our protocols. Those who have had COVID in the last 90 days do not have to quarantine after exposure either. However, and this is really important, the travel quarantine guidelines are still in place. As we head into spring break, travel is strongly discouraged, although we know that many might make that choice. Those that travel, whether staff or students, are expected to quarantine for at least three to five days prior to a COVID testing. The district will be offering COVID testing for anybody that wants it. It is required for staff on Wednesday, April 15th. Travelers will quarantine until they receive their results for a total of seven days prior to their return. In addition, we'll be starting our surveillance testing. You might remember that that is the ongoing testing, it's random, a random percentage of those who we've been testing since January 11th to make sure that we try and contain any additional spread. Please make no mistake, that this pandemic is far from over. On Friday, in Governor Murphy's press conference, he talked about a plateau in the decline of cases, hospitalizations, and transmissions. It was frankly, quite frightening. Today, it was reported that New Jersey has the highest case rate in the country, and the transmission rate is once again shifting above a 1. Essex County has remained solidly orange during this time, and if Nutley reverts to red, we will be directed by the Department of Health to revert to virtual instruction despite any of our plans. We just don't want anybody to be surprised if this happens. It is a directive. Along with this, we recognize that early dismissal, that schedule is hardship for some families. However, serving lunch and congregating in large numbers of students in the lunchroom is problematic. Having students eat lunch in their classrooms requires the removal of their masks, also a potential introduction of other allergens. So we are going to continue to reassess as other things open, and hopefully, by the end of April, based on the results adjusted necessary, including the possibility of adding lunch and extending to a full day. The earlier dismissal of students also allows us time right now to continue to sanitize school buildings on a daily basis. That happens, obviously, all throughout the day. It happens at dismissal. We change our custodial schedule to make sure that they're there to do that cleaning and sanitizing. As we start to bring everybody back for more time at the beginning, it's gonna require more. Please note that we will continue to adjust the opening and dismissal of schools so that the high school and middle school students are released prior to the elementary school students. We have heard that loud and clear, that we need those older students picking up the younger students at the elementary schools. I'm certain that there are many questions. I tried to cover everything that's come up, but myself, the leadership team, will do our best to answer the knowns during the public comments. Thank you all. Thanks for your patience while we got the sound so you could hear us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Our board secretary, Mr. DePisa.
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski, once again. Every month, I say the same thing, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say it again. Thank you to the Board of Education for all of your hard work, your committee work, your diligence in the efforts to bring everybody back to normal here in Nutley. I would like to thank the administrators, the teachers, the staff, the custodial and maintenance and ground staff for everything they do on a daily basis. A real thank you to the shared services with the township of Nutley. Prime example of that is today, next door, the lot being cleared and then being milled so we can park additional parking here. Just a snapshot of what goes on on a daily basis here with the shared efforts between the township and the Board of Education. And last but certainly not least, tomorrow morning, the county will receive the preliminary budget for technical review, and I thank the board for their diligence between now and the 19th to come up with a final budget that we can present on the 19th. That'll be a prudent example of what we do here in Nutley financially and for the students. Thank you, Mr. Kozinski.
Thank you, Mr. DePisa. And again, to you and your staff, appreciate the work that you do, and part of the shared services is us working with them, and them with the town, the town with us, and I appreciate the hard work you put in. Mr. Perigi.
Mr. President? We met with Solutions Architecture for the markouts.
Make sure it's on.
It's not on. We met with Solutions Architecture for the markouts for the secure entrance at the Yanacol Elementary School. We purchased--
Mics be closer.
I'm not sure it's on, mics.
It's on. We purchased 25 new mobile bench cafeteria tables for the high school cafeteria. We had a ceiling mounted heat detector in the gym hall during one of the practices, and we were able to reinstall it without the fire department's assistance. Last month's frozen pipe in the fieldhouse also affected the PA system. We contacted our insurance company and are waiting for an estimate for repairs. The new basketball backwards are scheduled to arrive this week. We are scheduling the install for the week of the spring break. That is for the high school gym. We have a company coming today to do estimates for new bathroom partitions at the high school. Each bathroom will be a separate estimate. This way, we can do the work one at a time, or all done at once as funds come available. We have the material for the two sheds, one of Washington and the other of John Walker. We are currently working on the shed at John Walker Middle School. We have a purchase order in place to replace the overhead garage doors at the maintenance garage. I'd like to thank Frank DeMayo and Mayor Tucci and the Parks and Rec for helping us remove the snow from our parking lots. I would also like to thank Commissioners Dr. Scarpelli and Mike Luzi and his staff for their assistance with the concrete pad at the middle school for our new shed. By return, five days a week, we'll have our staff working their regular shift. We will continue to disinfect and clean the schools to ensure the safety of students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perigi. Committee reports. Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had the Administrators Committee meeting the other day. It was held virtually, and in attendance were Mr. Balsama, Mr. Kozinski, myself, Dr. Glazer, Mr. Banyan, and Mr. DePisa, who gave an excellent presentation on the budget. So, thank you for that. Mr. DePisa reviewed the preliminary budget. The committee discussed the tax levy at 0%, 1%, and 2%. Mr. DePisa confirmed that the preliminary budget was open for discussion and change until April 19th, budget meaning approval for the 2021-2022 budget. Mr. DePisa, Dr. Glazer, Mr. Kozinski, and Mr. Banyan shared information from their meeting with Commissioner Evans to discuss the budget. Dr. Glazer and Mr. DePisa shared information related to long-range facilities resolution. The Yanacol secure entrance will be discussed at the March 24th planning and zoning meeting. The middle school parking lot subdivision will be discussed at the April 14th planning and zoning meeting. Dr. Glazer detailed additional federal funding. Dr. Glazer and Mr. Balsama shared information related to the Melissa Centella Scholarship, which we discussed tonight. Dr. Glazer shared information regarding COVID testing for staff and students. Additionally, she shared information on vaccinating the district's faculty and staff with our Hackensack Medical Partners. Dr. Glazer and Mr. Banyan shared information regarding the fuller return to school, as she just discussed, including articles relating to studies of three-feet social distancing in schools versus the six-foot previously. Dr. Glazer shared the meal program grant has been extended through August. With the elimination of virtual Wednesdays, community meal pickup will be moved to the high school cafeteria, still on Wednesdays. Dr. Glazer and Mr. Banyan shared information about District Goal Number Three related to diversity and March 12th staff professional government. Dr. Glazer shared information on the human library project. The committee engaged in the discussion of the 21-22 academic and 12-month calendars. Dr. Glazer shared personnel updates, and there were no legal updates. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 13th at 6:00 PM. I appreciate everyone's attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dancheck-Morton, can we do academic, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee met on March 15th. Mr. DePisa began the meeting by reviewing the preliminary budget proposal, highlighting the changes in the budget with different percentages of revenue, 2%, 1%, and 0%. The list included staffing costs, technology, transportation, special education, facilities, and other areas. Ms. Chiaso, Ms. Doyle Moreno, Ms. Vidiallo, Mr. Williams joined the committee to update and provide information to the secondary rise program. This program includes transition support for students in special education programs to build confidence and functional independence skills as they move forward to post-secondary options. Ms. Locuncolo presented information on the five-year curriculum renewal cycles, highlighting the sequence of progressions for social studies. Mr. Dwyer presented the findings of the Social Studies Program Review Committee, including a description of the current program, survey results, and feedback, standard shifts, updated state requirements, best practices, and available resources. Mr. Dwyer concluded with his recommendations and will present to the full board at the April Board of Education meeting. Ms. Locuncolo and Dr. Glazer discussed the affirmative action and dyslexia training that the teachers and staff received on March 12th Professional Learning Day. Dr. Glazer expanded on the human library project as a possible way for the district to work toward District Goal Number Three. Dr. Glazer, Mr. Banyan, and Ms. Locuncolo provided the committee with an update to testing, vaccination, and in-person learning discussion and actions that are occurring throughout the district. Ms. Locuncolo reviewed field trips and professional development days with the committee. The next academic committee will be on Wednesday, April 14th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. Mr. Ferrara, we discuss the Finance Committee, please.
Yes, Mr. President. If the public can hear me, I can go up to the front mic.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on, actually, March 8th.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
You're closer to the microphone, please, from what I understand.
Okay. Is that better, Mr. President?
That's better.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on March 8th and also on March 16th, so I'm gonna give my reports for both days. For the March 8th, the Finance Committee met virtually to review the detailed preliminary budget, which is being proposed by central administration. This preliminary budget was constructed utilizing zero-based budgeting and included the request from the administration and coordinators. This budget includes a 2% tax increase, which is a decrease of .05 in spending from the 2020-2021 budget. After review of the preliminary budget, the committee requested two additional versions, one at 1% and one at 0% tax increase. A total of three budgets were sent to the rest of the board for review. That meeting concluded at 6:25 PM. On March 16th, the Finance Committee met virtually, which we discussed for the district the long-range facility plan modification, rate increase on the daily substitute pay. The committee asked for a census from the surrounding districts for rates they are utilizing for the subpay. The Annapolis School Secure Entrance is on the Township Planning Board agenda for the March 24th meeting. The committee discussed the CSI annual renewal for the district's business software, Noble spotation for two floor machines, innovative therapy proposal for a per diem school psychologist for a leave replacement. The committee also discussed the first settlement agreement with Suburban Joint Insurance Fund for the Nutley High School auditorium claim, payment for Dakota excavating for work that was done at the Oval, a quote from Positive Electric for services at the maintenance garage, a quote from Lombardi Doors for replacement of the garage door at the maintenance garage, and a potential agreement with Apple for staff device refresh. Committee also reviewed the Caliant Scholarship and the thermal scanners from LDI. Mr. DePisa discussed the potential options for district logos, which we're looking to utilize on all maintenance vehicles. Mr. DePisa discussed tonight's meeting and logistics for planning and preliminary budget process. Mr. DePisa also stated that the board, and I wanna reiterate this, that the board has the option to change the preliminary budget anytime until the final budget is adopted. And we are also waiting the budget projection for the end of 6/30/2021 from our orders so that we can plan for the remainder of this school year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrara. Mrs. Quirk, can we do the Policy Committee, please?
The Policy Committee met virtually on Monday, March 15th, following the Academic Committee meeting at approximately 8:00 PM. The committee reviewed policies to be rescinded as they were out of context or duplicated in the policy book. The committee reviewed recommendations from the Board Attorney for security drill-related policies and decided to table these policies pending information from Strauss Esma. The committee reviewed and approved 25 policies for first reading in the areas of operations, administration, programs, pupils, finances, and property. The committee tabled a policy on family leave pending more information. The Policy Committee would like to thank Mr. Ferrara, Mrs. Boyle, Mr. DePisa, Mr. Pyro, and Mr. Materia for providing recommendations to policy language. The next policy meeting will take place on Wednesday, April 14th, following the Academic Committee meeting.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Quirk. Mrs. Zou, do we have any type of a legal update? Mrs. Zou, can you hear me?
I think you called on me. I think you called on me. I can't hear anything you're saying, but no, I have no idea.
If, for some reason, you have questions, you can email the superintendent, email myself, but we'll try to accept as much as we can tonight. Any of your responses will be done by texting in your concerns or questions that you have, and we will try to get through them. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on resolutions only. And I apologize for looking at my phone, but it's people texting me telling me if they can hear or not hear. Our board regulations 0167 allow 20 minutes for these communications. Each person should be entitled to three minutes, and we ask you to try and stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson and may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, I couldn't hear it anyway, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions or concerns on resolution items only at this time? Thank you. Mrs. Dancheck-Morton will take academic resolutions, please.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move academic resolutions, 1 through 4, as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Balsama.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Zou.
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski.
Yes. Administration, Mr. Riley, will you take that, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move Administration resolutions as listed, I saw them.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Balsama.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Zou.
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski.
Yes. Mr. Ferrara, will you take resolutions, Finance Resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I move Finance Resolutions. I move Finance Resolutions, 2021, as written.
Second.
A discussion, Mr. Ferrara, on Resolution Number 12. So the audience should understand, that's a settlement that we are in with our Joint Suburban, Joint Metro, Joint Insurance, Suburban Metro Joint Insurance Fund. It's a partial payment, still in negotiations with that particular committee as of now. Thank you. Roll, yes, sir. Roll call.
Mr. Balsamo.
Yes.
Mr. President, we had a discussion on that, on anything?
I'm sorry? Is there a discussion?
We had a...
I'm sorry, right?
No, you had a discussion on Point 12.
I apologize. I thought I said discussion. Certainly open for a discussion.
All right, so, just for the sake, I mean, I don't want to reiterate the other moments, I'm sorry. But this budget is a preliminary budget. The numbers can change anytime between now and the time we approve the final budget. So I just want to put that out there again because there's no confusion. And that the Ad-Hoc Committee is going to meet, and hopefully we can find some cost savings. Maybe there's additional funding that we're going to be getting from the state and we'll be able to save some additional money, reduce that increase to the taxpayer while also doing what's best for our students. A lot of our taxpayers out there are hurting, especially this time, you know, given COVID. You know, they're out of work. So you hear from some residents that their salary's been cut 25%, 30%. So it's very important for us to, this year, look at this budget and do the best that we can, not only for our students, but for our taxpayers.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ferrara.
I'd just like to double that as well. I say regards to Salas, that they can't hear me anymore.
Don't say it. Don't say it again.
Same regards as Mr. Ferrara just said. This is preliminary. There will be another vote on it on April 19th. There's an Ad-Hoc Committee, hopefully looking to find other ways to get below a 2%. So we'll look forward to that on April 19th.
I will try to clearly reiterate the board members' concerns. If you don't know, this board is certainly concerned, along with the commissioners in the town of Nutley, about the tax rate in the town of Nutley. We are trying to be as frugal as we can. My two board members just voiced their concerns, as all of the board members have those concerns. We want to be educationally fair to our children and yet frugal to the taxpayer. That's part of our job. We are here to maintain that. This particular budget, as every budget, is a preliminary budget, still to be scrutinized closer by the Ad-Hoc Committee, which is the way our committee system works. Good or bad, we need to live with it, but we will take a much closer look at the budget, and hopefully we come back on April 19th. We are in a position that is fair to our children and fair to the taxpayer.
Mr. President, if I may as well, I just want to echo the same thoughts and concerns that Mr. DeMayo and Mr. Ferrara have. Again, if you read the resolution, as the president just said, it's a tentative budget. The reason that we have an Ad-Hoc Committee that's going to look deeper at it as hard as we can, and which I am part of, and I appreciate the president for putting me on that committee, we will look to save whatever dime, penny, nickel, or dollar we can if we can't come below that 2%. If it makes sense, we will certainly do it, and we're going to look at it hard over the next month. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a roll call now. Mr. DePisa.
Mr. Balsamo voted already. Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Zou.
Mrs. Zou, you want for a vote?
Yes, and I also wanted to read it because I couldn't hear anything before that I am part of that Ad-Hoc Committee, and we will look at every one. Thank you.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes. Mrs. Quirk, I'm sorry. Mrs. Zou, will you take Personnel, please?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry. I had to move Personnel as stated. Thank you.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Balsamo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Zou.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes. Mrs. Quirk, will you take Policy, please?
Yes, I move Policy Resolutions, 1 through 4, as written.
Second.
Discussion. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Balsamo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Zou.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes to hear these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board, and we will take text questions or email questions from the remote audience at this time.
So, I see, the first question that comes up on my chat, they were voting on the resolutions that were on the agenda. They went through the committee report, so that's the insert of that question. I'm hopeful that you're going to continue to hear here. There is a, I don't know if there's a written transcript of the meeting, but what's being recorded in the room will be clear. If you could hear me before, I did say that when the recording is posted, it should be clear. All right, let's see what we have here.
That has a terrible echo.
Oh, let's try and get rid of that. Is that better? Yes, better? Yes? All right. So, Dr. Glazer stated the district will follow CDC guidelines. The CDC calls for six feet social distancing in areas where the transmission rate is rated high. Yes. It said three feet for students, six feet for staff, six feet in common areas, and then it goes on to say the community transmission rate is to be considered. As everybody in this room knows and has heard me for years say, I speak with our local and county health offices multiple, multiple times a day. If you could hear my speech, you did hear that I commented that Essex County stays orange. Nutley is like the rest of the state creeping up, and they are absolutely monitoring our plans for reopening. That is not, despite what you might think, my decision. As we've presented many times, there is the chart, the yellow, the green, yellow, orange, red chart, and if we go to red, it is taken right out of my hands. So let's see. From what I could hear, the middle school and high school go back five days, starting in April. Dr. Glazer said the same schedule, but that seems impossible given three cohorts. Do you mean no more cohorts, just in person? If so, why do you need a commitment from parents by this Friday? So we are looking to go back in, perhaps on a two-schedule. You know, maybe we'll do the GHGH schedule. Not sure. It's going to depend on the numbers, and that's why we need a commitment from parents. We need to know who to expect in the building. So the high school and middle school, they're actually very different. The middle school's about a third, maybe a little more than a third, who are virtual. The high school, at this point, are many more. And going back five days a week, we do expect students to change, and we need to make sure that we can follow all the guidelines and handle all of those students. Just to be clear, it's not just the middle school and high school that'll be five days. It would be the whole district, pre-K to 12.
And we'll take a couple from here.
My staff were distracted.
Oh, I can't, I can't see, but I have to pick. I can't see him. He put his, what?
Maybe we'll take a question from the audience. Is that okay? The audience is...
I'm reading the questions in the chat. That's what I'm doing. I'm going through the chat.
All right, you can, sir, if you have something to say, you can stand up where you're at. I think that I'm okay with that. We can hear you.
You need to, I'm so sorry. Say your name and your address.
David K. Simmons, 611.
Hi.
So you said five days, April 12th. Correct.
Five days. Yes, five days.
So the concern seems to still be around launch.
Yes, that is a huge concern.
Okay. So, I guess, I speak on behalf of a lot of people. The concern is that we don't really have what seems to be the science or data that's providing a specific phase in plan. Which a lot of our districts throughout the state and throughout the country have identified. The concern that the next launch gets bad, and when the next launch gets bad, that triggers the next phase.
Right, and that is what I just said earlier, that by the end of April, we'll be reassessing that capacity and those transmission numbers, and that's what we're hoping to do. Most of our Essex County colleagues, we do the on Fridays, are trying a whole variety of different things. Sending kids home for lunch, coming back in the afternoon, having kids bring beach towels, sit out on the lawn, eat outside. We're looking at all of those same things, but my first goal is to get kids back, and then I think spend to the whole rest of the year.
I understand. My question is, the last board meeting, where we asked the question around, the board brought to the attention that they were going to test 5,000 students, okay? And you've stated in the past that you're working with attorneys and you're working with medical advisors from Hackensack University Medical Center. But then, no more than a couple days after that board meeting, everything that was said was retracted.
Actually, that's not true. We did still do our mandatory staff testing. We did the testing of all of our athletes, all of those students who participated in in-person classes, grade seven to 12, and we did all the testing, optional testing. For anybody that wanted to register for it, made kindergarten through 12. Our goal is to get people into school. I'm looking for as few roadblocks and barriers as possible.
I only ask that because we're now here at another meeting, and what's being stated is that we're looking to have the town give us kind of a poll as to who's going to come in person versus who's going to be at home.
Wait, you say that? That's not a...
What's Friday?
So we have a real-time parent portal. I'm sure if you have children in the district, you have to log in. So since last March, actually, longer than that, we've had people go into the portal and answer the question, are your children going to be 100% virtual? Or are your children in the past, and are they going to be, you know, taking advantage of the hybrid in person? The question for this time is, when we come back for this last marketing period, are your children going to come back five days with us? Or are they going to remain 100% virtual? That has nothing to do with the town.
Okay, my last thought to that is, if you're asking parents to make decisions without knowing if it's going to be, you said through the end of April, you'll make another decision about possibly full-time, all day, right?
The best you can do, sir, is that we're in five days, and we're on our consistent schedule right now. We have spring break. You're talking a matter of weeks. The people that are willing to have their children come into school until 12:30, for the most part, have communicated with us that they're willing to have their children in all day. There are very few people that have told us, I want my kids in, you know, two days a week for two hours. Even our kindergarten program. The transmission, even, our contact tracing, right? What counts as close contact and quarantining and that, is still based on six feet, and it's close contact of less than six feet for more than 15 minutes and 24 hours. So those people that are sending their children to school are not concerned about, you know, 15 minutes or more. They're much more concerned about our protocols, and that's why I spend so much time talking about our protocols. Sure.
Thank you. We'll take another question from the audience, the virtual audience.
Oh, the virtual audience? I'm looking at the microphone speakers. One of the estimates. We also don't know the number of active cases in the district currently. I don't know that any of us know the number of active cases in the district currently. What's reported to us is always on a delay. I will tell you that the Health Department reports that we had 100 new cases this week from last week, and Nutley is at 58 deaths. And that's from the local reporting.
Someone else in the live audience want to ask a question?
No, I'm going to go. So the question is, if Essex County is orange, and Nutley is in Essex County and continues to be orange, and the CDC says six feet for areas of high community transmission, why is Nutley changing to six feet? No, to three feet, sorry. On Friday, in a meeting with the county, with the Department of Health, with our senators, with our representatives of the Department of Education, we were told that orange is not the high watermark, is not the benchmark. It's red, and that we would, we should proceed to return to school. But again, following all those protocols, and that's why, if you could hear my speech, if you couldn't, I will absolutely post it or say it again, that if we do venture into that red, they will absolutely require us to return to virtual, which is not the goal. Let's see. The CDC states that less than 10% of adolescents aged 5 to 17 have been tested positive. I don't know where that statistic comes from. If you look at our Nutley Public Schools with 4,200 students, let's just say, do I think we've had 420 positives from the students? Absolutely not. Have we had from the students and staff combined? Absolutely not. But that doesn't mean that there's not a transmission rate, and that's what they look at, is the transmission rate overall. I think that I've said in every single board meeting that the issue in schools, right, is not the outbreak. You've seen all the same data and research that I've seen. You saw the same, you know, CBS Sunday Morning, Face the Nation, CNN that I saw. You saw the same Massachusetts study that I saw. And we're doing like everybody else is doing, and digesting that new guidance and bringing it in. Let's see. So what would be the schedule if all middle school or all high school students said they would be in person? That's the data that we're collecting. We are going to be five days, right? So maybe that looks like a GHGH, or maybe that looks like GGGHH. I don't know. The goal is for all the students to get their AM and PM classes, to get their full schedule. And at the middle school, because lunch is built into that schedule, we have to figure out what's going to happen during that time, right? So that everybody gets their full instructional time. Those are the only questions in the chat. I don't know if anybody else in the room has a question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir. You can say it from there if you're comfortable.
That's nice to meet you in person.
I would pleasure, actually, I'd say for this. I want to thank everybody who worked and were certainly encouraged by the House to do five days, to people who called. But Dr. Glazer, I want to clarify something. You say that the Department of Health is the one that makes the call to say you have to go for a vote. Is that the New Jersey State Department of Health?
So, yes, it's the New Jersey State Department of Health consults with our county and local health department. They look at the numbers, and again, think of that chart. I've presented it a bunch of times. I don't have it to show you tonight. But it's the green, yellow, orange, red chart, and according to the reopening and reentry plans, when you're in that red, virtual instruction is required. We're in the orange, and they monitor that. Like, I got a call on Saturday morning, after I was all excited Friday night, saying, you know, what's happening with spring break? Are you already thinking about spring break? I know it's two weeks away, but these case numbers are going up. What are you going to do about people who travel? And you did hear me address that tonight.
Sure, so, do you have a good understanding what those individuals are basing those decisions on and making the guidelines?
The reason why I ask is I don't know if you saw, uh, was an article published in The Hill from four prominent public health experts that basically made a very strong and convincing case based on five different studies that said the case transmission rate is greater in the community than it is in the school setting.
Absolutely.
So it's a safer environment to send kids into school regardless of case rate because of various factors, where children have to get passed around to multiple caretakers and that exposes them more. And that's why there's a greater transmission in a community versus the school. So I challenge that thinking to say, well, case counts are high. We need to send kids back into an environment that's where case, uh, case transmission is high. I mean, on its face, that doesn't make any sense.
I don't want to interrupt you, I just want to make sure that, that we're on the same page. That's why I took the time to share when you quarantine, when you don't. That's why I took the time to share the numbers of our staff that have been vaccinated. At this time, right, a staff member that's been fully vaccinated, two weeks past their second dose, even if they're exposed, they don't have to quarantine. That's not something that'll close us down, right? If, um, somebody's had COVID in the last 90 days and they're exposed again, again, that doesn't require a quarantine. That doesn't require us to, to close down. We've had a large number of positives. I'm guessing that there's got to be people in this room that have received a letter from me saying, you know, that an individual in your child's classroom or cohort tested positive. All the protocols were followed. There was no close contact according to the contact tracing. Um, therefore, we don't need to quarantine, but watch for symptoms. That, that's the path we've been following. Um, it's worked really well for us the last three weeks. I'm not going to tell you we didn't have to quarantine a couple of sports teams, we did. I'm not going to tell you that we didn't have to close down a bus route, we did. Um, but overall, we're doing what needs to happen to keep kids in school.
The other thing I would ask, if you have a voice with these individuals that you're in contact with every day, is to raise these, these issues that I agree, that, you know, I can certainly share this, this article that cites the Children's Hospital Philadelphia, the Wisconsin Study. And these are studies that were sponsored by the CDC. So obviously, as sitting members in the public, this is very concerning and confusing because you have experts saying one thing, yet the protocols are telling us something else. And I understand that's a challenge for, for you guys too. But I, what I, what I hope and expect is that when these county and state officials say, well, case rate reaches red, you need to go full remote, to challenge them in saying that that's not supported by the current science, it's just not.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm saying that the state has not changed that guidance. Not the Department of Education, not, not the Department of Health. And, um, I do challenge it, right? We, like I said, I called the United States Commissioner of Education and said, look, I can't do anything with this six feet. You know, I've been a, a strong advocate. The truth is, there are a lot of people that don't agree with me. There are a lot of people that, you know, believe that what they said in March, or the World Health Organization, because they were disenfranchised, or tongue, I mean, I can't keep up with all the theories. I can only do the best we can do every day. Daily electronic screening, temperature taking, consistent testing, vaccination, and, and follow those masking and sanitizing protocols to keep everybody in.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Yes, ma'am. You might, you might want to come up a little bit because I-
I don't want to share. Mike, just now, just your name and address.
Um, Brady, for like 26 Earnest Street. Um, so what, going from six feet to three feet, how much does that increase how many kids can be in a classroom?
Um, I would say probably three times.
Because think about if we have, you know, we already, and I want to be, again, transparent about this. We were already short on instructional space, you know that. We, we've commented on that for years. So our, our regular classroom space was already a challenge before three feet or six feet. So we've actually been able to go in and measure and say, we could probably get, um, with the three feet, we could probably safely get 18 kids, except in a weird shaped room or a small room. And we fully expect that after we get this data back, just to be clear, we, we've been consistent with about a third of the students being virtual. I mean, I would love to think that everybody's going to suddenly, you know, make a decision for the last marking period to send their child to school. That's probably not a realistic expectation. So I, I'm not, um, thinking that it's going to be an issue, but it does, it's different in every school, right? You have some grades that have 30 kids in a class. I have some kindergartens that are over the guideline and that worked while we were virtual. I don't know where to put them, you know, now that we're coming back. I have, you know, I think of, we brought the ABA kindergarten back today for the first day at Radcliffe School. And that works because they don't have to share the, the gym, the library, the other specials. Remember, those children are, are children that are included. They need to be in the regular classes with their peers. So when we bring everybody back, we have to be able to figure out, how do you double up a gym class? How do, how do you add those kids, you know? How do you have a second bus route to make sure that everybody can come? So that's more of our challenge, right, than the numbers of kids that are coming or not.
My question, are we concerned that some people aren't going to say, wow, five full days a week? I can accommodate that, we could receive babies that are picking on my child. And then all of a sudden, we have way too many kids now, we can't hold five days because we have too many people. Then we all can sign up to that.
I think what we would do is try and adjust the schedule. That, that's what we've done so far with pre-K. It's what we've done with the other programs, is try and adjust the schedule a little bit, like the ABA kids because of the transportation. We have two bus routes, they're about 45 minutes apart, their dismissal is, is staggered. And I think we would look at those things before we would look at not opening.
I'm sure you understand that, that it's, it changes every day. And every school unfortunately is going to be different simply because of the number of children. And we're going to have to look at every, every school individually, every case individually, every class individually, on how to best do it. We don't have all the answers yet, but we're certainly trying to get there.
Well, no, absolutely, that's my, my fear is that I can't hold five days, and then I'm like, oh, well, now we can't accommodate five days. All of a sudden, everybody wants to-
It's not, it's not a fear, but it's, it's not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's not a fear, but it's a concern of ours also.
But we, but we, believe me, before we went down this path, we, we've been looking at that space, right? We, we know which classrooms can accommodate all the kids, right? We know which rooms you might have to swap out for a different room. We know which rooms, you know, don't have the appropriate ventilation, not because there's something broken, but because if you're having a small instruction room and you try and put that many kids in, you're, you're going to have a ventilation issue just from the number of breathers, the number of people breathing in the space. So we're, I think that we're in a good place to manage it. Um, I, I expect, I mean, I, you know, I, I hope by now, after a year, you know, I'm, I'm the biggest Pollyanna that there ever was. I have rose colored glasses and I'm always cautiously optimistic. I am, I am hopeful that the vaccines catch up to the, to the trans, uh, you know, the other viruses, the ones, the mutations. I am hopeful that the people that have had COVID, right, are not getting a different strain of it, that, that we're really, um, at a place where that spread can be contained and that the positives that are still there, because, look, there's thousands of people testing positive every day still. There are people dying every day still. But the hopeful outcome is again, with a combination of testing, combination of vaccines, following the protocol, that we can manage that in such a way that we do come back.
I just want to clarify, the orange, if the county is orange, Nutley is red, or is it not?
No, it's not orange, we already are, we already are orange.
Oh, yeah, that's right, so if the county turns red and the-
No, if the county, so if the county turns red, that's why, that's when they start calling me and saying, so you know, this is what's happening in the county, this is what this school district's doing, this is what that school district's doing. You know, this school district is going virtual the week after spring break. Have you considered going virtual the week after spring break? I know you're testing, I know you're doing this, but maybe if you didn't come back until the 19th instead of the 12th, you know, so that's the kind of thing that they call with, when it, when it starts to creep up like that. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions on the-
Let me see, I, I lost track while you were answering in the room, sorry. Uh, five, I think I just answered this one.
The next one is just from here.
No, I have Laura Del Tufo, we are not on the same-
Are we done virtual?
I'm not there yet, I'm still at the, back here. So Mrs. Del Tufo asked the five days and, thanks, Mike, I, that's really a cute idea, thank you, because I can't hear you. Orange, but that's, that, I understand what you're saying from the CDC standpoint, but that's not what the public health locally is saying. I know you can hold it up, I believe you, I probably sent it to you.
Yes.
Can you unmute, maybe, Mike, can you unmute so he can hear you? Oh, okay. So I'll tell you what, because you just looked frustrated to me. Um, call, call me in the morning, because I, I can see you're holding stuff up, but I can't, I can't understand you. And Mrs. Del Tufo, um, you know, if we're not in the red, does that mean we can move to five full days or does something else need to happen? We are trying to figure out the meals, right? We still have a capacity issue for food and being able to take off masks. Like I said, some districts are sending kids home for lunch, some are eating on the lawn, some are trying to find ways, um, to stagger, you know, sessions and eat in a, in another space. That's a staffing issue for us, obviously, because you can't have staff without their own break. Um, but we're, we're working on that and literally, the entire leadership team is looking at what's happening in their own kids' district and, and everywhere else. Uh, let's see, Mrs. Blue has a question that has not been answered.
She was asking if there was going to be a written transcript, and I said that the recording would be available.
Now being posted for-
Oh, thank you, thanks, you guys, okay.
Would you like me to unmute so you can hear Mike Stoffler to hear?
Oh, if you could do that, we could hear Mike. Mike, Janine's going to see if we can hear you. Talk, Mike. You talk, I'll be quiet. I, mostly.
Okay, my, my question is, I put it in chat, I don't know whether you're going to get to it or not, is, um, are you telling me that you're going to go against what the CDC guidelines are for seven to 12 grade, where it calls for six feet in areas of high transmission?
No, the areas of high transmission, ooh, sorry, hold on.
That's okay.
Sorry, I'm trying to use my future voice and all it does is echo. Um, no, the areas of high transmission, there's two different things. There's the community transmission, and again, this is how it was explained to me, um, by our county health officer, our public health nurse. There are two different kinds of that high transmission. There are the community transmission, which is that orange high or red, very high. But what, um, she explained to me was the areas like hallways, stairwells, um, bathrooms, lunchrooms, you know, areas where you still need to maintain six feet of social distancing. The guideline, um, said that, um, it was three feet for student desks, but the teachers still needed to be six feet apart. We still need to stay six feet when we're in the common areas. And that is what we're planning to do at the high school.
No, actually, you're not.
Mike, we can hear you.
Well, I'm not going to respond. That is not the CDC guidelines. That is not what the CDC said. CDC, CDC did not say anything about common areas, it's talking about classrooms. In middle schools and high schools, students should be at least three feet apart in areas of low, moderate, or substantial community transmission. In areas of high community transmission, which Nutley is, according to the state of New Jersey, middle and high schools should be six feet apart, cohorting is not possible. That's what they said. They didn't say anything about common areas, they talked about in the classroom. I don't know why we told you about this.
I, I can only tell you how I've been advised, Mike. I'm not trying to be difficult with you. I'm telling you that they are talking about hallways, lunchrooms, passing, you know, passing in the hallway. And we are keeping that six feet, we are staggering. I understand that you're talking about the community spread, which is, which is a valid conversation about orange or red, but that is not, um, the conversation that I was having on Friday. That's all I, I can tell you.
Maybe you should meet with, um-
And again, I, I think that's a great idea. Just call me in the morning and we can talk about it and wade through it. And maybe get the public health nurse on the phone. Do you think he can hear me, Janine?
He, he can hear you, he's still trying to talk, I don't know if he would like to hear that.
No, I just like, I think we should just meet with the public health nurse and get it clarified. I just think that I, there's no other information I have.
Mike, the suggestion was, or Mr. Stoffler's, the suggestion was that, uh, you and Dr. Glazer and the public health, health nurse meet and clarify any questions that you might have, so we, you both have a clear answer. We can do, if you can do that tomorrow morning or whenever, that would be better, I would think.
Because I don't have any other information.
Okay, any other questions from the audience? Mike. Mr. Stoffler, in all due respect, it's, I, I wouldn't want you to be deprived of a good communications here tonight. And obviously, we don't have that. Um, and I don't, I don't want, you know, it would be much easier, I think, for you to sit one-on-one with Dr. Glazer and the public nurse, simply because I don't want anything to be lost in translation like it has been for this whole meeting tonight. So if we could do that tomorrow morning, that would be fine.
I'm going to the next person, I guess. Jess Lemire. So that, the room, the number of desks is by the space. So originally, it was built on six feet of social distancing. The teacher still has to maintain that six feet from the students. The student desks can be three feet. Jen Farrow, if things are still being figured out, why was the information put out that students will return for five days after spring break? So Jen, if you look at the, the email that was sent as a heads up, it does say that that's what's being proposed. It does say it's going to be discussed at the board meeting tonight, and that is what we're doing. Um, we're, we're, our goal, our goal has always been to return, um, and we're working towards that goal. Oh, here's Mrs. Blue's comment, and you guys answered that?
She's just asking about the transfer. Yeah.
Okay. Um, what percentage of high school students are attending currently? So district-wide, it's about a third. At the high school, it's less, but it depends on the grade. Um, like seniors, believe it or not, there were only about 48%. But Mrs. Gerkins, our coordinator of school guidance, has processed 144 changes since the deadline of kids going back and forth. So I wouldn't tell you that I have a definitive number today to share that with you, but it was fewer at the high school than it was at the other, at the other schools in grade levels. So I'm sorry, I'm trying to read Sal, Sal Scarpelli put in CDC guidelines alignment with operational strategy. He's what? Oh, okay, thank you for answering. If all middle school kids vote for in-person, would my son be in the school building five days a week, half days? Or would you have to cohort because that's too many bodies in the building? I don't know the answer to that. We, we have had consistently a third of the kids virtual. Even if half the kids come back, we still think we can fit everybody in. Um, not necessarily, you know, at the middle school, it's different. You talk about the cohort, the middle school has the teams. We use the middle school model and you would still have your teams, right? You would still do your, your GGGHH because you have three teams, not because they're, they're co-horted. And we would get them in five days if we can. Ventilation regarding the increased people number in the classrooms. Um, I don't have an answer about the ventilation with an increased number of people. That hasn't been the issue, hasn't been the number of people. The issue has always been the 15% fresh air and the filtering, and we've been able to, to solve that. We haven't had that issue, um, for, since October, I don't think.
Will the intercooled child care providers, will be-
I don't see that one, Karen, I have a-
All right, let's, can, can we just use Dr. Glazer, what she sees and move on from there? We could do that. Yes, sir.
I just want to, I'm sorry, I'm just reading this person and I'll answer it, and then you, sorry. So, um, the question is, will we consider dedicating a teacher to be the sole virtual teacher for each of the lower grades? Unfortunately, there's not staff to do that. Um, I wish we had staff to do that. Um, it's not a possibility. And I think that, um, one of the things we're looking at, you heard tonight- And I think that one of the things we're looking at, you heard tonight, well, at least the people in here heard tonight, that we're looking at the budget, we're looking at those staffing issues, we're looking at short-term federal funds, and I think that we're going to have to continue to look at that. I think that the virtual option is here for sure until June. We've heard rumors that it'll continue next year. We don't know. We haven't had any definitive guidance on, on what's, what they're thinking. They, they haven't shared that with us. And then along those same lines, other than following the mask mandates, hand washing, crowd avoiding, how can parents work with the Board of Education to get more in-person time? I'm going to tell you that all of our quarantining and all of our positives, as we do the contact tracing and get the contact tracing results back, all come from the exact same thing. They come from people gathering in each other's homes without masks. They come from kids carpooling and then sitting in the cars, talking, and not wearing masks. They come from, you know, I hate to say congregating because that sounds terrible, but it, it comes from them, you know, going and being kids. They're kids. And I get that everybody is tired of this. I am tired of it. I haven't seen my own child in more than a year. I haven't seen my mother in more than a year. But the truth is, that's what we have to do. We can't just say, I'm sorry, you're bored. I'm sorry. Go bike riding or something. I don't know. Keep your mask on. But, but it is, all of the, the ones we've had have been like that. And I think that the other thing that people can do, and I think it's a really important thing, please answer your daily screening tool truthfully. You know, every time, we have people traveling, not sharing that. People who have symptoms, not writing their symptoms down, they test positive and say, oh, I thought it was a cold. We're a year into this. It's not a cold. And if it is a cold, congratulations. You, you are, you are the golden ticket winner. Follow your symptoms. That, that's how people can work together with us to help get more in-person time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Go back to the way...
The ventilation component, the filtration. I just overheard you. I didn't hear the whole thing, but you said it was addressed.
So, so when we didn't open, when ventilation was one of our three things, it was more of an overcrowding issue than it was a mechanical issue. We did the whole walkthroughs. We did the engineering walkthroughs. We did have a problem here at the middle school. We did have some individual classrooms that have been addressed. But for us, when it's really, when it's like 100 degrees on the third floor of the high school, we don't have those people stay in those classrooms, right? We rotate them into the air-conditioned spaces. We combine classes together so that the teachers and the kids can get a break. You can have water. You, you can, you know, do all kinds of things that we were not able to do in September. That was why we were constrained. That was one of the three areas that kept us from, from originally opening in September. None of those are an issue at the moment.
Not an issue at the moment because of the school.
Well, no, no. Because the, so here, the, the board invested more than $100,000 replacing the compressors and chillers. They made sure that all of the filters were upgraded to the next level. I mean, Mr. Perigi's sitting right there. He can tell you, you know, all of those things that were done so that there wasn't an issue.
Mechanical changes that need to be corrected have been corrected.
At, at all the schools?
Of course, at all the schools. It doesn't mean that something might not fail tomorrow, but right now, we feel more comfortable mechanically than we did in September. Certainly, with the weather that we're having, opening the windows is, is, is an add-on like we did tonight to give us some more ventilation. That's what we're looking for.
Well, the in-school, oh, I'm sorry. Well, the in-school childcare provider that's currently using classrooms prevent the children from returning to a full day of school? I have answered this question every single board meeting since October. Right at School is using no classrooms in our building. Right at School came in with the expectation that working families, other families, parents who needed the virtual Wednesdays would be taking advantage of their fee-for-service. We provided that fee-for-service at the request of the community. You, you've never had more than 25 kids sign up. We, we thought we were going to be at all five elementary schools. We, we've barely been at two. They're in the gym, socially distanced. They do their, their instruction, and then they do structured activities. They have never been in a classroom. They have never taken any classroom space. And just, I'll take that a step further. They pay the district no money for using our space. All of that money was put back into scholarships for families that had a financial need to do sibling scholarships and scholarships for the staff.
Okay. Are you done?
I don't know. Uh, let's see. Dear board members, everything that you're dealing with, with sound in the microphones and not being able to hear, we call that hybrid learning. We deal with that every day.
Thank you. Good point. Good point.
Again, please confirm, clarify what you mean by returning for five days. Will every student be in person every day? Every student would, depending on the data, depending on where we are at, yes, every student would be in person every day. Right now, it would be on our same schedule, our same entry and dismissal schedule. And that, that's, that's the best I can tell you today until the portal closes. And then, Janine, did we already answer this one? How much, oh, you're just repeating the questions for the people? Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Um, I already answered, Mike. We're not going against the CDC guidelines. And Mike, you and I will talk with the county health nurse tomorrow. Let's see. How much notice will teachers be given if they need to swap rooms? The principals are already looking at the space. They're already working to make sure with Mr. Perigi, and I don't think all the schools have this issue. I know that there's a couple of classrooms here at the middle school that need to be swapped out. Is there, are there classrooms, other places that need to be swapped out? Mr. Perigi's shaking his head no. When will the classrooms that do not have windows or ventilation be able to be used again? And again, Mr. Perigi, I have to ask, you know, for you, which, the classrooms that don't have windows and ventilation, we're still not using them, correct?
We are not.
We are not using them, and we won't use them until it's deemed safe. Do you know the actual times the high school will arrive and leave? Will it be earlier and later on both ends? So for right now, it's the same time. For right now, like I said, all of the entry and exit times will be the same. I would love to think that we'll be able to add time to every period and extend that day, but for right now, it's the same entry and exit time. The public can hear Mr. Stoffers. They'd like to hear him. I, we've tried. I don't know another way to, to do it. And I, you know, again, I'm more than willing to, to meet with him and the county and get those answers. If, Mrs. Cox, if you have questions, please reach out. You're not shy doing that, and I'm happy to answer you, too. If teachers are going to be five full days, will there be a childcare option for staff? There already is a childcare option for staff. Staff is able to access Right at School. They get 50% discount. That's part of the agreement we made with them. I can't answer if they'll grow to Radcliffe. It depends on the numbers. Like I said, we've never had more than 30 kids total in the program, usually around 2025. You'd need 15 kids at a school to be able to grow to the next gym, and we have not had that. Will there be a written transcript since we were not able to hear the meeting? I think that's been asked and answered. It won't be a written transcript, but the, the camera in the room is recording the video and sound, and they will post that video. So you'll be able to see and hear the, the full meeting. Let's see. Classrooms are way more likely to be places of transmission, not the hallways where kids are walking and not congregating. And that's because you guys are doing, this is a teacher, by the way, but that's because you're doing an amazing job of making sure that they're walking and not congregating, that there is no close contact. And honestly, we've been very successful in the classrooms because of the social distancing and the masking and the teachers being so mindful of the space that we are not having that transmission.
Can we do a couple more questions and kind of, it's repetitive.
I don't think that was repetitive.
We answered that.
Let's see. We aren't asking if the recorded meeting will be shared. We'll be asked if they'll be provided with a written transcript if the recording is not able to be understood. Again, there is not a written transcript, and it's our understanding that the camera in the room has clear sound and clear video. If there's something that is not understandable, please reach out to Mr. DePisa, the board secretary, Amwell, see what we can do.
We'll probably be able to give you the time that that will be televised if that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. We're still taking pre-K to the bathroom, and it's impossible to keep six feet away from the students in the classrooms during ABA learning. So we've known all along that for our pre-K students and our special needs students, that they have a very difficult time being more than six feet or even three feet of social distancing. We know that in our pre-K classes, our ABA classrooms, and in some of our special ed classrooms, that's the case. The district did invest in masks and shields and gloves and gowns, whatever you need in the way of personal protective device to keep you safe. And we can certainly have you speak to Mr. Perigi about any other guidelines you need or Mrs. Doyle Moreno. Those protocols have been in place all along. We've been doing, even when the rest of us were out, the special education staff and students were in for assessments, and we've been successful. So if there's something you need, please reach out and ask us. Will some teachers still be provided an accommodation to teach virtually when the students are in person, or will coverage be attempted so children are not being taught virtually still? So let me just explain. I'll repeat the question. Will some teachers be, still be provided accommodations to teach virtually when students are in person, or will coverage be attempted so children are not being taught virtually still? To be clear, there is a difference between an accommodation, right? An accommodation is something that is a legal, a legal determination. It is under the Americans with Disabilities Act. It is, comes with medical diagnosis and that, and those accommodations are not necessarily accommodated with being, with teaching virtually, just to be clear. I know that the public has some feeling that when a teacher goes virtual, you know, that, that it's, you know, who knows what, COVID or wherever. That is not always the case. Sometimes somebody's injured. Sometimes they're sick with something that's not COVID. Some, it could be anything. And the truth is, in those instances, we'll have to revert to virtual. We are doing our best to assign substitutes to buildings to, to entice them to work only and nuttily at that one school and not work in other districts. We won't assign them into other schools. But, but honestly, your child's classroom teacher, teaching them virtually, who knows the kids and knows the instruction, is better than, than a substitute teacher coming in for the day and following the subplane. Why are we able to have a snack at their desk? Why can't we make full-time? They do not have a snack at their desks. That does not happen. There are snack breaks. We try and do it outside, almost always outside if it's inclement weather. Every building has identified a space that does have the proper social distancing, that does have the proper ventilation, and we rotate those classrooms so that people are only in there for about 10 minutes. And our custodial staff, who are amazing, get in there and disinfect and fog before the next class. So they are not eating at their desk. As a matter of fact, if you talk to our staff, that, that's a big bone of contention. There is no food or drink. You can ask our, our Board of Education. There are no bottles of water. Nobody's, you know, doing that. That, that is not a possibility at this time. We hope that we'll get there. That'll solve some of our problems with, with being in school full day. There are no snacks at the desks. Yep, I see Ms. Farrow just said the same thing. No snacks at the desk. Is there a plan where students are back five days a week once the heat index rises again in the classrooms as far as ventilation because we'll not have the airflow that we have now? So the good news is, if you look at the forecasting, we should be able to be outside. Again, that's what a lot of districts are doing. They're taking their classrooms outside. They're, they're making use of outdoor spaces. The district invested in a lot of tents. We have outdoor spaces, plenty of lawn space. So we, we should be able to be outdoors and accommodate that. And of course, then students and staff will be able to drink water because they'll be outdoors, all of those things. We typically don't have that heat index in the spring. Occasionally, in a, at the end of the school year, we're going to see that. And if we see it this year, then, then outdoors is the best that we've got. And again, it's not about ventilation, it's about congregating. I want to be clear about that. The ventilation is fine, but where we usually rotate students into other spaces, where we combine students so that they have that opportunity, that's what we're not able to do. I would think more people would utilize it if it was in their child's school building. So again, we have marketed, we have done everything to say that Right at School is here for you. We would expand to other buildings with more enrollment. That has not happened. If, since this is the second question about it, I think Mr. Bania, Mrs. Lokenso, maybe we'll do another parent night, maybe we'll do an information meeting and see if we can generate, I don't know, generate some more enrollment? If, if that, if that, if you think that would work, I'm sure they would be willing to do that for us.
Especially with staff coming back, there might be more of an interest.
Okay. I'm sure they would do that. All right. And this one, this is off the current topic, but it was during the meeting. So the substitute rate is going up to $125 a day because the district's having a hard time hiring subs due to COVID. Are you going to look into the standard substitute rate of $80 and increase that to match or exceed our neighboring towns, while a rate starting at $90 to $100 a day to stay competitive? And the answer to that is yes. That is one of the things that the finance committee, that the ad hoc budget committee has looked at. Both of those things are on the table for conversation. Why is there an option for those who want fully virtual to pay for a program like those who needed their children to be in school? Why is there not an option for those? So, so there is an option for those who want fully virtual to pay for their children. They can go to Right at School. Right at School makes sure that they get all of their virtual instruction, they get the schedule for the student, and make sure that they're logged into their asynchronous learning. And unless I'm misunderstanding what you're asking me, that, that option is available. All right. Why would teachers have to remain in the buildings if students are not there, especially since you said that this time is being used for disinfecting? How is it beneficial to our students if teachers are in the building if they're not? So first and foremost, we disinfect on whatever schedule is there. You heard Mr., well, maybe you didn't hear him, but Mr. Perigi, in his report, talked about the schedule changing when the students come in. We do that cleaning on an ongoing basis all day. We don't wait till 12:30 to clean. We don't only clean at the end of the day. And the truth is, you know, why are all of us in the buildings since July, right? When, when everybody's virtual? Because we're a school district, because this is our job, because we have a responsibility to get our classrooms ready and to be ready for our students. The, the difference of you being back in school, when you're, you're, if you're having afternoon lessons, if we're still continuing that, your, your students see you in the classroom. They have that consistent instruction. And believe me, I know. We, we've been virtual for a long time. We have rhythms and routines. We don't want to take our things back and forth. I, I, I'm with you 100% on all of it, but it's time that we start transitioning everybody back to the buildings. How will staff members effectively teach in an outdoor setting? Oops, I lost it. How will we teach in an outdoor setting with students if they take the virtual option? And what schools are getting tents for outdoor teaching? So we have tents for every school. We purchased those when we were coming back in November. I'm happy to talk about that or, or, you know, ask your principal, talk to your building custodian. As far as the virtual options go, I do think we have to look at that, but the virtual students aren't, aren't 100% in with you. That might be an opportunity if you're outside when they're doing their asynchronous learning. How do you plan to address that in-person children with virtual teachers still stare at a screen and have the same experience they had since March? That's not in-person learning. So again, I can't control a quarantine situation. I can't control somebody being ill or somebody being forced to travel for a relative, none of those things. And the truth is, you'd rather have your classroom teacher teaching the instruction And the truth is, you'd rather have your classroom teacher teaching the instruction and following the sequence and providing a delivery of instruction, that's what you would expect for your child, than having a room monitor in the room and the asynchronous learning. We, we learned last spring that that's not going to work for most, and we've worked very, very hard to provide live instruction. So even if it's on a screen, you're still having your teacher teaching your child. Um, not ideal, but, but we're in an unusual time, and let's hope that, that we're coming to the end of that, that there is a light at the end of the tunnel. Many parents' feedback is Right at School, it's expensive, full-time is more expensive than private school, and the pickup is at five for working parents, many who work at the site until five. I know this feedback's been given a lot, it would be appreciated if you would explore another vendor next year that's more affordable and has extended hours. Um, we would love to go back to our regular before and after care hours. Um, I, I'm going to say that our program is not very much more expensive. Six dollars an hour is not an unreasonable amount to pay for childcare, but if you're paying for it from eight o'clock until five o'clock, that, that would definitely add up, no question. Um, but noted. Um, I'm asking if there are parents who would not like to send their children back? Is there a program who would like to remain virtual that they could pay for, so our teachers are not taking their focus? So, so I, I'm not still understanding. I'm, Janine, can you see the chat and read it? Because I'm sorry, I, I thought I answered it, but I don't think I understood.
I think she's asking that if the virtual-only students
They want.
who want to stay virtual could pay for something.
They want to have their own virtual class.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, you mean like an online, like an online learning program?
Yes.
There, there is not an opportunity for that, um, currently. And thank you for clarifying, virtual kids paying tuition. We, we don't have an opportunity for that currently? Um, I, I suppose homeschooling or, or some sort of online option would be available, but I'm not familiar with it. That is the last question in the chat.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if there's any other people in here, but that's the last on the chat.
Thank you very much, Dr. Glazer. Yes, sir?
Well, have they looked at our meeting? Go, you know, going back to the quarter to fall, let's say, you have a similar situation, we'll look at virtual again. Has, has anyone looked at using the Parks and Rec building, the VFW halls, things like that for, to spread out?
So we did, we did early on, we're pretty lucky that we have Mr. D'Amelio with us as one of our board trustees because he's the guy that knows the capacity of the Parks and Recs building. And most of our trustees are also, um, community members who volunteer, like the Alps and the VFW. Unfortunately, up until now, right, it's only been since Friday that capacity increased. So when you could only have ten percent, twenty-five percent, thirty percent capacity, we couldn't even, you know, do very much.
Can I understand that? Well, you know, last March, when, when COVID hit, we had all summer, we kind of know that we, this might be, this might be going into the fall. And here we are, almost a year later.
It's amazing.
So we're saying, you know, we're, it is here, so we know that this could be a potential situation come the fall again, so.
Right, so we, so we looked at it, I, I'm going to answer you. So for Washington School, those kids could walk to a Parks and Rec building and maybe take advantage of some of the space then. But for most of the other space, not walkable, not, you know, we, we don't have the buses, right? Because we're doing special ed, busing and out-of-district busing. There's not a way to, to move the students to those, to those available spaces. But believe me, we explored every option. I believe, and, and I'm just, this is my, my opinion, not Superintendent Glazer, this is Julie, my opinion. I've heard the governor say it, I've heard both of our senators, Senator Ruiz, Senator Menendez say it. I've heard President Biden say it, I've heard Dr. Fauci say it. If we continue with our protocols, there is no reason why we cannot get back into schools full-time at full capacity. They're expecting it for fall, we're still trying to do it for this school year. And, and yes, we look at all of that, and we, we, I'm telling you, you would not believe the creativity and innovation among this leadership team.
But it doesn't, it doesn't.
We keep trying.
Say though, put that out of the.
No, we keep trying.
And we.
Put that out of the public, because I think there's a lot of confusion in Facebook groups and that, so.
Oh, wow. So we're not on Facebook, so.
Try to make that more public, so.
Right, we, we did, we, we have visited quite a few spots in Nutley. I'm certain, we have to revisit it again as the numbers are changing right now. Thank you. Is there any old business to come before the board?
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions for Dr. Glazer.
Oh, sir.
So we have the April vacation coming up. We have the April vacation coming up. And I apologize if I missed, you know, if this is something that was answered, but if a staff member, if a child, if a family, if somebody in the district decides to go out of state, what's the protocol when they return?
Okay, so I did, I did address that twice, but I will answer for you too. Oh, Michael, sorry, can you hear me if I talk?
That's, that's the problem, I can't hear you when you do that, but.
So, I'm going to do both, how's this? Can you hear me, I'm seeing you?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's a great look.
I'm sure it's beautiful on the camera. Um, so, even though travel is discouraged, highly discouraged, people are still going to go, right? So, what we've said is, whether you're a staff member or a student, if you're traveling, the CDC requirement is to quarantine for three to five days upon return. You have a COVID test, we will be testing all of our staff on April fifteenth, and any of our students that want to take advantage of us to test. You have to quarantine till you get results, but no less than seven days. After that seven-day quarantine, you are able to return.
So we're relying on that person then to let us know that they traveled out of state?
So, I, just to give you an example, we've already asked our principals to pull the staff. It's not just out of state, so I want everybody to be clear, because we get this question a lot. You can go to New York, you can go to Pennsylvania, Delaware, Connecticut, none of those are quarantined states. You can go down to LBI, you know, all of those things don't keep you in quarantine. If you're going to go to, to Disney World, you have to follow the protocol. And that protocol is, upon return, you need to quarantine after three to five days. You get a COVID test, we're going to be doing it here in the district on that Wednesday, April fifteenth. You have to quarantine till results, but no less than seven days, so you wouldn't be able to return until.
So are we planning then to send out some type of communication?
Yes, yes, that's what I said, that, not only about that, I'm going to put in there, um, you know, if you've been fully vaccinated and exposed, you don't need to quarantine. If you've had COVID in the last ninety days, you don't need to quarantine, all of those pieces. And I can share that, again.
That's, that's, thank you, because like I said, it's hard to hear from up here, so.
It's hard down here, too.
So then it really becomes a personal responsibility of the person who decides to, you know, travel out of, in, in an area where they have to come back in quarantine.
Yes.
Okay, so, so that's important.
That's well-publicized.
But that's an important piece for people to understand, that it's personal responsibility, right? So, as much as we want to keep the buildings open and get kids into the buildings for a longer period of time, we want to make sure that parents, staff, community members that, that do that are responsible, that they follow those guidelines.
Yes, and there is the question on our daily electronic screening tool. No judgment, we, again, we get it, people are going to do it, we'd rather you just follow the protocol.
Exactly, thank you.
Yep, and hang on, because there, I know you have another question, but this caused questions in the chat. All staff does not have to be tested, only those who have traveled, um, to, to quarant, places where you need to quarantine. And again, the health questionnaire, um, says out of state because it's a trigger for the nurses to call you and ask where you traveled. So if you're traveling out of the country, check the box. Um, if all staff are being tested on April fifteenth and have to quarantine, who will be in the schools? Again, only those staff that have traveled to a place that requires them to quarantine. We already have started that list, and, you know, obviously, we, we are going to have staff in the schools. So, second question.
Uh, second question really has to do with, now that we're moving in the direction of five days a week, uh, we're going to have, still, we're going to have some families that choose to keep their children virtual. Alright, so they're, they're obviously still going to be, you know, right now, the way it's set up, especially in the elementary school level, is that in the afternoon, there's, there's periods for anybody, any student that needs extra help or has a question, that they can go to office hours. Is that something that's still going to continue in some form?
So that's a huge discussion, great question, because we, I'm not sure that we've a hundred percent solved it. So five days a week on our regular schedule, no problem. We go to a longer day, then we have to look at some other options. Mrs. Locan Solo has been looking at a whole variety of double-dosing LLI and strategies. I don't know if you want to talk about that at all? I know, sorry.
It's going to be easy.
Just very quickly, we're looking at other flexible schedules to deliver a lot of our strategy services this week. We're starting double doses of foundations, our phonics program to identify kindergarten students in need. And next week, we're starting double doses of LLI, and we're continuing to meet to see how we can be a little bit flexible with the schedule to offer, to offer those services outside of the traditional classroom.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thanks, Janine.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
Is there any new business to come before the board? If not, I'll entertain a adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Sir?
Thank you very much. Thank you, audience, for putting up with us.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Thank you all, I'm sure hearing it three times wasn't fun, but we appreciate you. Good night.